Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting. I'd like to apologize for being two minutes late. We had an assessment review, which we're all very happy about. So that's good news. So you have your agenda before you, council. Is there any errors, any additions?
Madam Mayor, there are no additions from administration.
Any additions from council? Okay, could I have someone move the agenda, please? Counselor, this will quote people. Counselor Carrie Jessiman, all in favor? Carrie. Welcome to Corporal Sam Holmes, who will be giving a presentation on the statistics.
So this is our March report for the last month. This isn't too extreme or crazy. We did see a busier month last, or this March 2022 compared to 2021. Calls for service and our prisoner counts were both up. Up a fair bit. If I was to hazard a guess, I would say, or that little spate of warm weather that we had combined with last year, this time, we were more self-contained with the COVID as compared to now, where everybody seems to be more free with things and out and doing things, and some of that can lead to some getting into trouble. But I think it was primarily that small spate of warm weather that we had that drove things up for us a little bit. And I know this past week with the cold that's come in now, it's certainly gotten quieter for us on that front as far as call volume goes. Just running down to the stats here real quick. Everything was fairly typical. We had seven complaints of impaired drivers last month. Four were cleared using roadside sanctions. So those, that's the new provincial system, where instead of going through the criminal justice system, they fail the roadside breath screening device and are immediately suspended from driving for a year. The car is impounded and the fine is imposed with a totally different vehicle then for, or a different method of them appealing that or taking that, causing agreements for that. But yeah, fighting against that.
So cleared doesn't mean they were let off?
No, it just means that they were cleared by the new provincial system as opposed to, this is the new format of trying to free up the courts from impaired driving certificate trials and things. So it's more of a ticket system with the punishment imposed being equal to what was the old criminal code offense. It's a little touchy with the making sure that we have everything in place and that there's due process still and that there's still good methods and things being taken care of there. And then there is no, unfortunately, chance to plead your case in front of a judge if you feel that you were not guilty of that. But there is a different, you have to use a website and log in and agree with your ticket that way and then go before a different sort of board. So it seems to be working well. It seems to be freeing up a lot of the court time and we're not dragging these things through court. If there's a significant collision with injury or death or with major property damage, then that would be something at that time that we wouldn't be looking to do that roadside suspension for. We would be looking to go to the criminal courts with that. If it's just a quick somebody caught impaired, then now we're going through this provincial system, which seems pretty good so far. Yeah, so out of those seven, four of them were cleared using the roadside sanctions. So that's the immediate. And then two of them were charged criminally. And sometimes we'll charge criminally as well if we know that this person has a history, especially a criminal history of impaired driving, where the more charges they're convicted of, the greater the length of their driving prohibition, possible jail time, and the greater their fine at that point.
So if you're cleared during the roadside, do you still get a criminal conviction?
No.
No?
No. It's just a provincial, it goes on your license basically at this point. Just running down again. Eight traffic collisions, which I think is fairly average for about a month. We didn't have anything that was too, too out of the ordinary that way. April's report next month will have a doozy, but we had somebody back into a structure last night and caused significant damage to one of our local hotels. But I'll follow up on that more in the April meeting. Still getting a lot of 911 calls, but that are not real emergency calls. They're either getting missed dials from phone systems where you got to dial nine to get out and then people hit one and then they think, oh, did I not hit one? So they hit one again just to make sure and then they're also pointing through and then we just need to make sure that nothing happened there. And then there's a couple of deadlines around the area up in Zanna City. There's one where we just get a couple of false hits on our 911 system periodically, but it's quickly cleared and we know where they are. So it's not a big deal for us. The other thing I wanted to touch on was to thank the Townify Level Council, especially your technology and media people for allowing us to use your chambers and your equipment for our RCMP Town Halls that we ran. We ran one Town Hall in January on the 12th. We had myself and Corporal Jason Barber at the front, just taking questions, giving a quick rundown of the detachment, the kind of things that we do, the kind of things that we're looking to do, where initiatives are taking us. And then we fielded questions from the general public via Facebook Live feed with the assistance of Bill. It was amazing. It worked really well. I was really nervous about it because this was my first time doing anything like this. And it was an absolutely seamless process, seemed to work extremely well. Bill just gave me our stats for that. And we had about 750 people tune into the one that I did in January 2000, or in January, on January 12th. We had 15 comments. We had a bunch of questions. Some of them were really good. Some of them were nice that people were lobbing us up a softball every now and then that we could answer and get ourselves back on track. It was a lot of fun. It was really good. And then we ran it again on March 23rd. And that was Sergeant Burns. That was, unfortunately, his partner got tagged out on that one, so he had to run that one by himself. But we'll make sure that we're not doing it by ourselves again because it's much easier to do if you have somebody to balance things off of. If you get stuck on something, you can tag your partner in and he can answer it. So it worked really well. We had a lot of fun with it and we'll look to continue that now this year. We'll run at least two.
Kent?
If there's any questions from council or?
Yeah, I was going through, something popped out to me there about the six firearm related.
You must be on the same line, like.
Six firearm-related investigations that led to charges being laid. Just curious about that. If that was something, that's not abnormal, I don't think, or?
That's certainly high compared to other years. There was, I'm trying to think of the specific examples that are involved there.
But this is six in one month?
This is this month.
Six in one month, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's like unsafe storage.
Yeah.
And some of those were investigations on like an unsafe storage, where we had a call on unsafe storage or with one. And I know there was one where it was somebody who was prohibited from firearms. And then we found a firearm in their, on the property or in their possession. So they were charged. That's one. But we did have, I'm trying to think now, some of those, two of those were imitation firearms. So what we're seeing more with some of our frequent flyers is the airsoft guns. And the, we actually had one, it was an airsoft gun where they had converted it using a kit that you can get on the internet and made it into a 22 pistol. So it's not, certainly not a reliable, it's not something I would ever want to fire for fear of it blowing up in my hand. But that's some of those. I can certainly dig up some more of the specifics and get back to you at next meeting or follow up with you another time, too.
No, I think that's fine. I, you know, if it was something that was maybe gang-related or something specific, but obviously it's just a normal.
Yeah, I think it was just a cluster of the regular things. And I don't think that any of that was any kind of organized crime or the gangs. I've seen it in the past.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for doing your Town Hall meetings.
No problem. It was a lot of fun, I have to say.
So an update for, from Peace Library System. Louisa Robinson.
She is online. I'm just waiting for you to welcome her to the meeting.
Hi, Louisa.
Hello, hello. Can everybody hear me?
Barely.
We're in the same boat. I can barely hear you. I will speak very loudly then.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can mostly hear what you're saying as long as you're right in front of your microphone. So I'm just, if, may I go ahead?
Yes, thank you and welcome to our council meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen right now. In the hopes that you are seeing what I'm trying to show you, which is my presentation.
We can see it.
Awesome. Technology works. I love it when that happens. So how does the money work? Sources of revenue. And in addition, PLS will receive a provincial operating grant of $14,618 on behalf of your population. And I want to be clear that that is not the same operating grant that your library board receives to run your library. It's a completely different pot of money. And the last few years have been, have seen some additional provincial support. In 2016, Peace Library System began receiving a provincial grant to extend services to Indigenous communities. Each year, we've been working with libraries to add programs and services to attract Indigenous patrons and make other patrons more aware of Indigenous culture. And we're working with some of them on outreach to specific Indigenous communities. And High Level is one of those libraries so that they can do outreach to CHADA. And other than that, our revenue consists of school contracts and a few miscellaneous sources. So in 2022, municipal members will contribute about 55% to PLS operations and the province will contribute about 33%. So how does the money get spent? Most of the expenditures translate into services for libraries and area residents. Less than one quarter of our revenue is spent on headquarters operations, administration activities, and board governance. So we'll start with library collections, which is the blue bar on the right there at 40%. And that is by far the biggest expenditure is library collections. It involves the funds that are sent in by library boards, municipalities that are put into the ordering accounts for libraries. It includes all the activities necessary to order catalog, receive, process, and deliver those materials so that they're shelf-ready. It also includes some special and expensive types of materials like large print books or audiobooks on CD that we buy as a system and then lend out to our libraries. And about half of our staff make those services happen. And the benefit of that is that centralized activities are efficient and save money overall. We get a bulk purchasing discount because we can purchase on behalf of all of our libraries rather than each library purchasing on their own. It generally turns out to be about 40% discount on books and between 30 and 35 on non-print media. As well, libraries get help building their collections just to suit the needs, needs of their community. At the bottom, the red bar there is IT services, and that is 13%. And automation and IT support, very important area. We've automated libraries on the same software and we've connected them province-wide to all the other libraries. We provide support for that circulation software and for the computers, the wireless equipment, the supernet equipment. We provide internet services and website support to our libraries. And this support all happens locally by trained people right at the PLS headquarters. And again, all that sharing makes things cost-effective. Libraries are able to keep up with current technology and they expand their services to meet their patron needs. At the seven o'clock position there is, in the green is training and programs, and that's 17%. Consultation and training. Library managers and boards need someone that they can call and they call people in all of our departments with questions. They also have a consultant assigned specifically to them to assist them with all areas of library management. Our consultants also offer various kinds of training, including in-person and online training for digital resources and devices. They plan that exceptional conference and they help with library programs. And through this, libraries are not alone. There's always somebody that they can talk to to get solutions to problems, or they can just bounce ideas off of us. And they can keep up with the latest library initiatives and help keep things running smoothly. On the left there, resource sharing is the little purple bar there, and that's 4%. And it's a very small amount at 4%, but it's also one of the most important things that we do. Library systems connect libraries so that they can share their resources. If you had to sum up libraries in two words, that's what we do. We share. In 2020, while most libraries were still closed to visitors, member libraries still loaned over 141,000 items to other libraries. And they borrowed in almost 228,000 from other libraries. And that's all while the doors were actually closed. They can borrow from all types of libraries, from public and college and university, and pick up those items at their local library. Patrons are also looking for online and electronic resources, and we've been building those up over the last several years. We've added apps so that people can download eBooks and other e-resources onto their own devices. And additionally, we've created an app for the library catalog called Track Pack App, which means you can manage your library account from your device wherever you happen to be. And again, all that sharing means that libraries don't have to have it all, but they can rely on the interlibrary loan system. Patrons have access to almost the entire provincial print collection and to more and more eBooks and other e-resources. And there's something there for everyone. And because they're members of Peace Library System, they can also take their local library card to almost any public library in the province and borrow books or DVDs or CDs while they're away from home. Or they can take a special card from TAL, from the Alberta Library, and use that to borrow from colleges and universities, which we can also do through the interlibrary loan program. And lastly, at the 10 o'clock position there in orange is operations and administration, and that is 18%. And that's the activities that are the foundation, the support for all of those other services. It includes the building, office, and administrative costs. However, many of our services take place outside of our headquarters building in Grand Prairie, and there's many people on the road at various times. Our couriers are on the road five days a week. Our consultants are out visiting their consulting libraries at all times of the year, and our IT support makes house calls. And lastly, you'll see there, the chart shows expenditures for Indigenous services and some miscellaneous expenses, such as the board expenses and transfer payments. So what's the bottom line? When you send in your funds every year, you can be assured that your libraries and your residents are getting good value in return. And the services we provide are designed specifically for our region. We keep in contact with libraries regarding where they need the most support and we plan our services accordingly. In fact, you should have gotten just late last year our new plan of service, which tells you how we're going to be providing those services over the next three years. And lastly, I would like to thank you for your support for libraries and your contribution to regional library services. Townify Level joined Peace Library System in 1986 as one of the founding members. And your membership has made a difference to library services in your area, and we can certainly do more when we work together. So if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer.
Council, is there any questions for Louisa? No, thank you very much, Louisa. That was a great presentation.
I thank you for your attention and I'll let you get back to your meeting.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, council, you have your minutes from March 28th. Is there any errors, omissions? If not, I will take, oh, yes?
Sorry, under my report, March 16th, it's Regional Economic Development Initiative, not Development Act. We all know what it means, but someone else reading the minutes may not.
This is your area. Okay, could I have someone move to accept with the aggression?
Oh.
Counselor Anderson?
Actually, sorry, there's one more error I just noticed, sorry. I attended the McKenzie Regional Waste Management Commission, March 23rd, not November 23rd.
Okay. I'm probably going in November, though.
It feels like it's November outside.
Thank you. Okay, could I now have a call for a motion, Counselor Anderson?
I'll move with the moment.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. The RCMP report, could I have someone move it, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carrie. We don't have to move Louisa's report, or? It's not on the agenda, is it?
No, Madam Mayor, I would suggest that you pass the motion. Excuse me for information as well.
Could I have that motion, council? Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carrie. I apologize with my report. I had done Saturday and then I forgot to send it. March 30th, happily can say that they find a March 30th, happily can say that they find they released our Vishchu Lake Subregional Working Landscape Report. There is the website, so you can go there and look at the approved plans. They are the first approved plans for Caribou in Alberta, so we're quite proud of them. So go see if you can find any errors in them. Did you look at them already, Counsel Jessman?
I've started them. There's a lot in there. It's something that you're not just gonna like reading, but yeah, I've started in them.
We did lots of work, didn't we?
You did a lot of work.
All right, and so then also the board accepted the ABMI presentation, as well as the partner update, which will be uploaded to our Northwest SAR website if you so want to look at it. I may have a presentation to Counsel on a, on a day when we don't have as much stuff here to look at, just so you're up and up on it. Mackenzie Frontier Tourism Trade Shows are open again. Peace River was last weekend. Mackenzie Frontier agreed to send members to Peace River Trade Show, then Loma Creek Trade Show on April 22nd, 23rd, and Yellow Night, May 7th and 8th. I think this is wrong, and 6th and 7th. Ruth's not here. April 5th, I met with the CAO and the Canadian Strategies Group, and I wanted to say that we're very happy to report that the 2.6 million that Minister Nixon said we could have for the variants of Toko can now be used entirely for the multipurpose center. So we're going to have to look at that. April 6th, we had our meeting with the Deneetaw. Everything was an update on the waterline wastewater joint emergency plan. Once again, thank you to the government for giving 1.5 million to our partner, our WUI team under the strategic initiatives, so that will be put to good use. April 6th, I met with the CAO and Counselor Lambert with the chamber, and we discussed ways that the town could support the advancement of our, our chamber. April 6th, I met with the Golden Range Society along with Counselor Anderson, and I gave a report on the timeline and renovations at Mackenzie House. And I'm happy to say that we are not going to become another Grand Prairie hospital situation, that the work is actually going to start on August 1st, and it is to be due, completed for August 31st, and we'll be able to accept clients November 1st. So that's really exciting news. And that's my report. If you want, you can ask me some questions. Yes?
So with the Canadian Strategy Group, are we continuing to get value out of that, or are we?
Well, I think that's going to have to be a discussion, right? We are, he is setting up a meeting for me with Minister?
Horner.
Horner. And Minister Teague. And we're also looking towards Defense to, to set up a meeting with Randy Bossino.
A lot of that work was instrumental in that 2.6 million dollars. That was work within the department to push that issue.
And just, I'm thinking, now that we have a federal budget, whether there's going to be a push-on or whether there's sort of a period where everyone needs to digest the document.
Well, this is from the last budget.
No, I understand that.
The grant funding. I think that we need to get to Minister, is he a minister?
He's a social minister.
Or MP Bossino? And then hopefully he can advance us to the Indigenous Minister. And hopefully we can push the bureaucrats with our lobby group to, I mean, it's been just about a year? Or it is a year since we put that application in.
What was the timeframe for?
They don't give us any timeframe.
It's just a?
We had to have it in by April.
No, but with the consulting group?
Oh, it was, it's in the current budget.
For, so it's an annual?
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
No.
We can sever ties whenever we want, if we're not getting what we're paid for, just like our lawyer. Yes?
Well, I think in the future, this is something we're going to have to talk about. I mean, it's actually, before I came here, I was thinking the same thing. But it's one of those things, do you turn the stone over, right? Like, we've come a long ways, we, and there's been some work done, but how much longer do we continue?
There has been a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that Counsel doesn't see. Like, he, every meeting that we have had with ministers is because of them. It's not because of our M.A.L.A. It's because he has worked to get those meetings. The same within, with the meetings in, in, with the feds.
I'm wondering if there's a way that we could get a regular report or an update, something to, you know, we do get updates from time to time from here, but I would feel a little more comfortable if we could get some regular updates of what he's doing and what meetings and stuff, because we haven't been involved in much of anything as far as Counsel. So it's definitely.
Counsel is certainly welcome to attend every meeting because we do it via Zoom.
Yeah, we have, I haven't been invited.
Well, I shouldn't say every, because sometimes the ministers don't want too many people in the room, because they'd like to know who's there. And they can't really see.
And they're also lobbying on our behalf without specifically us or you being at meetings with ministers and things. So I think maybe that's what Counsel Jessman is referring to, too, is the work they're doing behind the scenes, including their own lobbying.
And we absolutely could get a, like, I mean a tally report instead of a meeting with them. Counsel would like to see a sheet of paper saying, this is what we're doing, just like the RCMP.
They, they have given us annual reports. We can do that on a more regular basis of the activities that have taken place.
Just like, I'd like to see one about our lawyer.
We can share the bills with you. It's in detail.
Well, that would be something, because you know what, we don't know what's going on.
It would make me feel better seeing something. We are, it's a substantial amount of money per month, so.
So could you see that?
Yep. May I suggest not to hide anything, but that some of these activities, Counsel, they want to share with other possible performance for the same grant funding or lobbying.
Well, it's negotiation, so it can go into in-camera. All right, is, is there any other questions about my report? Okay, could I have someone move it, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. Deputy Mayor?
On March 30th, I attended the same NW SAR meeting as the mayor. And on April 6th, the town Deneetaw working group meeting.
Well, yeah, that's one of the things I forgot to say. That, can I, can I jump in on your resort? One of the, one of the suggestions that's coming out of the Deneetaw is that during their assembly days, which happen in July and are going to be in meander, is perhaps that would be a good day for us to sign our friendship agreement. So that's just a possibility that they threw out there. So it's a beautiful site. Yes?
On the, when is there, is there any word on their, their election, when that?
June, I, I don't know the, Jeff did say.
They were having a meeting on, last Thursday, and they were going to be discussing that at the time, but potentially should we just come along and maybe, but different chief than Counsel?
Okay, yeah.
Well, then, and they are leaving the friendship agreement to a new chief in Counsel. That's why they suggested July, or the date that they had thrown. It, so their, their chi, or their elections, I believe, are around the 16th or 17th of June.
But typically, the chief is elected in advance, correct? So there's two elections, or two election dates.
All right, so I jumped in on the Deputy Mayor. Do you have anything else? Counsel Anderson?
Only one, only one meeting to report on, April 6th, the Golden Range Society, the same one that the mayor and I attended.
Counsel Dwyer?
I actually have nothing to report since the last council meeting.
Counsel Jessman?
Same here, I have nothing to report.
Counsel Lambert?
On April 6th, I attended a meeting with the whole chamber, a couple of board members on there, Mike and Peter Russo, just discussing the potential, I guess, funding from the town with the chamber. Also discussed a couple of events potentially for this upcoming summer with shopping and everything, get people out there, and hopefully bring some, boost the morale around the town and bring some more business in the town as well. Anything else to report?
Okay.
Question?
Yes?
Is the discussion on
Yes.
the chamber later on in the agenda?
Anything else, Counsel, that one?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Welkey?
No meetings to report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move to accept, Counsel?
I just, sorry, I did miss one that I thought was a pretty good outing for her. I was out with Counsel Anderson, and we give out our thank you cards. So that was actually a very interesting and meant a lot for me. There's a lot of positive feedback from everybody that we give the parents to, and they really appreciate it. So that was a nice event. I can't remember the date, what date we booked.
Wednesday of last week, two weeks ago.
Yeah, so that was, in my thoughts, a huge success.
Okay, good. I had really good ones, too. All right, thank you, everybody. All in favor of Counsel reports? Oh, who moved that? Who's moved?
All of it.
Counsel Welkey. All in favor? Carry. All right, administration reports. Is that where you're sitting now?
Well, I also have like the next five items, so I just wanted to come to that.
So Counsel's action list, is there any questions on that? Yes?
I have a question for Mr. Straub. I'm not sure, I've noticed that there is a, a line of whatever sorts going from Bushy River into town, and they were doing some digging where our waterline went out, and I wonder what that's all about.
Good question, Counsel Anderson. The, that is part of the Deneetaw's water and wastewater project they're, they're doing on reserve. So as part of that project, they're running a high-density polyethylene force main from the residential area just before the bridge, where the pump station is, all the way back into town, tying into a manhole over on 92nd Street. So what that will allow is it'll allow them to have access to sewer services right away, as well as the municipality will be able to use that force main to connect properties along their back into town. Again, that's at no cost for the municipality to use, and to make sure the ownership will turn over to the town.
Is there also digging in there to take water lines to those individual houses?
Yes, so the, part of the, the contract that ISK is working on right now is the installation of water mains as well as water and sewer services. But I think there's roughly 36 properties there. So they'll be fully serviced and running on water. We did have the water installed last year, so they were ready for it, but without the sewer capabilities, and it was a bit of an issue. So as part of our partnering, we discussed allowing, having a force main to run from the, that section only back into town. And it, it's beneficial to both communities, because now we have the ability to put in small installations and service some of those more remote properties, like the churches and those properties along that line.
All brought to you by our partnership.
Thank you, Cedi.
Thank you, Cedi. Okay, any other questions about the action list?
I have one, Madam Mayor.
Counsel?
Do the CAO updates on the RSSA agreement and annexation?
Yes, we heard back this morning from the county's lawyer in regards to the final tweaks to that. I gave their acting, their interim CAO, Baron Peters, a call. There were two small items that needed to be dealt with, with the RSSA one. But the long and short of it is the county has agreed that the tender is no longer an issue with the RSSA. They've agreed to the 40-kilometer radius map that is truncated or squared off on Range Route 154. And they had a question of how that affected the, the assumption, or the road into Shitay in previous discussions. Mr. Peters and I have agreed that that is a mutual aid issue, that anything outside of that 40-kilometer radius will either be done at the request of the county or under mutual aid. So Mr. Peters suggested that what they'll do is similar to the Zama Road. They'll just forward a memo after the RSSA is, is signed and asked us to respond to that under mutual aid. So that is done. There's no remaining issues under the annexation agreement. It is complete. There was two small edits that dealt with their ownership of anything up there. They, they own nothing at the airport, so that is complete. The water supply line, for the South Supply Line to West Fraser, a couple of small edits. A remnant of a previous agreement was left in there, so that has been removed. That one is complete. I spent most of the morning with our lawyer walking through the franchise agreement. The county's lawyer had essentially taken an electrical energy franchise agreement and substituted the names. So there was a number of issues that we've altered in that agreement and will send back to them. I don't think we want them purchasing our water system at the end of the 20-year agreement. And stuff like that is in a normal franchise agreement for utility. So our lawyer will clean that up over the next couple of days and promise to have it to their lawyer by the end of the week.
So when can we expect to sign that agreement?
A lot of it, again, depends on the county getting back. I, from my understanding, talked to Mr. Peters today and our lawyer, that the only thing is the finalization of that franchise agreement. I'm hoping within the next two weeks, with a little concentrated effort, that can be complete and ready for signature, and we should be able to set a date to have yourself, and Mr. Kennesaw, sit down and sign these documents off.
So why can't we sign some without the other?
I had tentative agreement for that. It seems that the county's lawyer is recommending they not do that. The franchise agreement really has no direct operating benefit to the county. That's more of a courtesy. But he seems to believe that they all need to be signed at once. As possible, as possible, we can get around that. Once the other three are straightened out, just that last little bit of editing is done on them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the action list? Okay, could I have someone move?
I'll move again.
Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Upcoming events, I don't think that's changed since the last meeting. Counsel, anything you want to discuss on it? Do they have a motion?
I'll move for it.
Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carry. And that takes us to the monthly report.
Madam Mayor, the narrative report from administration is in your package. Please feel free to direct questions or ask any to anyone who's actually in the room.
Bless you. Is there any questions on the monthly report from administration? See, none. Can I have? See, none. Can I have a motion to move? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carrie. Under new business, the R F D for council to participate in the trade show.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this is put forward from a, a previous discussion, now that the trade show season is opening back up. It also arose out of council's, um, discussion during the strategic planning session, especially in regards to economic development. Uh, part of the idea was to start polling our other neighbors as to the services they use in the town of High Level and services they would like to see as they travel through the town of High Level. Um, to that end, uh, we're already booked into the Yellowknife Trade Show, which is May sixth to eight, if the mayor was correct. Friday is the sixth. The, uh, and then the A River-
Isn't it the sixth? It says in the, in the brief, May seventh and eighth.
Yes, the trade show itself is the seventh and eighth, but the setup is on the sixth, the Friday the sixth.
Really? Normally, there's Friday, Saturday. Yeah, it doesn't make sense that this would be on Sunday.
It starts Friday afternoon, from what I was reading earlier.
Oh, okay, I'm just reading the briefing.
So anyways, I would like to go, because I am going to... Yeah, it says five p- It's Sunday, May seventh, ten a.m. to five p.m., and Sunday from ten to four.
And there historically, they've, I've lived in Yellowknife thirteen years, they've almost had it on Mother's Day, on that weekend, so Tuesday is Sunday, the Friday leaving Saturday is Sunday.
Whatever.
Does that change your travel plans?
No, probably doesn't change yours.
I'll have to, yeah, it's on Mother's Day.
So. Bring her with you.
And my kids?
Yep.
Well, Terry's not going, I'm not going. We were going to go and be ambassadors.
I, can I get back to you?
Okay. Just because we want to go up and come right back, not-
I, I, uh, Ms. Clark will be manning the, the High Level booth anyway, so if your presence wouldn't be required during the entire trade show, if that was a concern.
We could probably go up do Friday, Saturday and come home.
Yep.
Go up Friday, Friday and come back Saturday.
Sure. Let's do it.
Let's do it. Book us a room, Donna. Not together. Um, for Friday night. And we'd be coming home Saturday. What?
Fine.
Can we have a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Council approving your attend- errors in Council Jessman's attendance at the Yellowknife Fair Show?
Council Welke, all in favor? Carrie, does anyone else want to go? I guess we should open it up. Maybe someone wants to do Sunday.
I'd like to go, but I don't think I'd be able to do the Sunday, because then I'm going to Canmore on business on the Monday.
I mean, maybe you should-
Stick just to Canmore?
Yes. Is that on town business?
Yeah, that's the, um, uh, policing.
How come they always get to go to the good ones? Canmore.
Yeah.
Yellowknife.
Yellowknife's awesome.
Love to go there.
We're gonna, well, come.
I guess.
I'd be interested in going to as well.
Do you want to do Sunday, then?
Well, if I can, or whatever that, we want.
So do we all want to go together, or?
Sure.
Okay. You guys can stay together.
Sure.
So Fri- so you could maybe perhaps tell Jenna that we'll do, you know, like Saturday morning?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll shift it off, depending on your availability. Uh, one of the things we'll be doing as well is, uh, we're going to develop three or four questions for people in Yellowknife that you could discuss with them for economic development purposes and all. All right?
All in favor of help us sending friends like this? All right, um, the district chamber commerce.
Uh, Madam Mayor, as both yourself and Council Lambert have noted, on April the sixth, uh, the two, two of you, along with myself, met with representatives of the Hallowen District Chamber of Commerce, those representatives being Mr. Peter Russo and, uh, Mr. Mike Osborne. Um, at your prompting, um, with Mr. Russo, you had requested, uh, for him to divulge what they would like to see the town participate in. And those three things are in your briefing page on page sixty-one. Um, the one thing was the assistance with events. Um, we had discussed having a spring event with the chamber in combination, uh, to promote businesses within the town. Um, so we'll work with the chamber on that. Um, those are, those one-off events really aren't that, um, difficult to participate in. Uh, we tend to spread them more across staff, volunteer off and on, and, uh, it, a lot of times it involves hauling tables and chairs around rather than anything else. Um, the second one that, um, that we were asked about was the assistance with a part-time chamber administration. We took a look at what we were planning on hiring for summer positions and part-time positions throughout the year. And the one that, um, Director Rolfe felt would probably work best in this situation was the budgeted summer events coordinator, which we're in the process of recruiting to right now. Um, ninety-one hundred dollars would allow us to continue that position through to December thirty-first. And eighteen thousand dollars would carry it through the entirety of the next year. Um, so what we have done, um, is we have included that in the budget that will be presented to you a couple of items later. Uh, council can decide as part of that budget discussion on whether or not, or now, whether or not they'd like to leave that in there. And then the last request, as noted, was the ability to buy the chamber membership with the business license. Um, we have some technical issues with that, because you, it's not just a sort of click and put in your credit card to buy, renew your business license. It's a much more manual process. Um, but we will review what we can. Uh, there are some changes with the updated diamond. We may be able to, um, deal with more online payments for customers, so. But I'm just asking that we sort of table that item until closer to the business license cycle, which is in November.
Yes.
I understood that Community Futures was helping them with payments for their memberships.
Uh, Community Futures gives a small grant to all three, uh, to, sorry, the two chambers in the Board of Trade every year, or they did it at one time.
I know Community Futures pays their membership and ready annually, but I thought for the last number of years that you could pay your membership through Community Futures.
For your business license?
I believe that's current.
No, for the chamber membership.
Sorry, Community Futures is, is managing the finances for the chamber, so yes, that's where you submit your chamber membership, is to Community Futures, but I don't believe Community Futures is soliciting on their behalf for memberships.
No, but they're accepting the payment, so here we wouldn't be soliciting for membership necessarily either, well, maybe through the admin staff, but i- if the payment is going to be an issue, I think they already have that covered in any event.
What they were hoping for, or what Mr. Russo was asking for, is so when you get your business license, um, you would have sort of an additional little checkbox that, oh, I'll buy my chamber membership at this time as well.
But what about businesses that don't get a business license?
We're working on that.
Well, no, some are exempt by-
Oh, I see, one said, well, of course, that would only affect the businesses immediately within the town of High Level. It's all about the businesses, uh, within the larger community, even the other county, because we don't issue business licenses for them. So it, it, I think what he's looking at is it would assist with, with the process. I'm a little concerned with the, the process itself, at least at this point in time.
Yeah, he was just thinking, you know, like it's just one last time you have to pull out your checkbook or and people are more out to get their business license along with their chamber membership.
I just know that through Community Futures, I thought it had been working very well, and if it wasn't going to meld with our system, that we would, it'll meddle in something.
Well, I think it will have to be like the C A O says, looked at, and to, to further to our November business license.
I just wanted to maybe clarify, and maybe I'll check with Mike, but the Community Futures initiative of purchasing businesses, chamber memberships and board trade memberships in the region. That, was that the initiative that was put out this year? Do you recall, Claire?
They were do- they've been doing that, they had been doing that for some, for several years, but I, to be honest, I can't remember if that's in the Community Futures budget for this year.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I don't want to say too much before I would double check with them. But then also that would ask the question of, is that, like, up to the business to request that from Community Futures, or?
Well, currently, if, if you launch a chamber membership, you would, Community Futures is doing it, is processing those, because the chamber-
So the bigger question is to support them with admin, like, we'll dabble over that small request. The other, the most important thing is they do need support, because all the business people work. And in order, they feel, in order to get them some ground or legs under them, they need some administrative port, support for the next two or three years until they can work themselves into it. Um, we've suggested that they have a, um, the Alberta Chamber of Commerce come up here and tell, and, and reach out to Larry in, uh, La Crete to help them build a better board. So... The question is, do we want to help them? For the next two years?
Yes, yes.
Yeah?
Well, I think a strong chamber of commerce is really important for the community and the region, right?
Yes, and I agree all heartedly. I don't think that the town maybe will give them an operating grant of a little bit in the future, but that's a future budget. But for this year, I think this is a way that we can help them.
And if the town has the capacity?
We would with this position. Uh, if we can hire a position through, not just for the six, the point six that we've got budgeted, but all those through to the end of December. So we, we'd be looking at a little higher level of position than we're currently advertising for.
So would we have to add that to the budget before we pass it?
It's in the budget.
Okay.
Yes, as it is, okay.
Um, and Madam Mayor, my suggestion at this point in time is we leave it as, as the one year. If this is something council wants to continue, we could look at a more formal agreement with the chamber near the end of the year.
All right, does someone want to make that motion? Do you want it all, we'll just make the motion for, uh?
To, to assist, um, I would say just for part B at this point in time, just for the administrative support.
Okay, does somebody want to make that motion? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carrie. And the other is just, uh?
We'll bring it back.
I mean, the-
For the events, yeah. I mean, in the past, the town and the chamber worked very closely together on any events anyway, so that will just recommence.
So you don't want it for information, or?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, so this gets us to the big one. The operating budget for
Oh, Madam Mayor, did, uh, I didn't catch, oh, sorry, that was, uh, the deputy mayor?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to Director Phillips.
Okay, Council, you've seen this about ten times.
I get it.
If you have questions, we're not going to go through it line by line. I have a few questions.
Good evening, Council. Mayor and Council, um, presenting is the twenty-twenty-two operating budget. Um, the recommendation did state for Council to approve the twenty-twenty-two operating budget as presented, but as for the M G A, we must adopt the operating budget, so I just want to change that wording for the resolution. Um, if there is any questions, um, going forward, I'm open to any questions.
So on page sixty-six. Under equipment rental, it's doubled. And I'm just wondering why.
Page sixty-six.
Um, Madam Mayor, this is computer replacement program that you discussed with us, and, and so we can start the emigrating of our computer equipment.
So that is the increase?
Yeah, there's sixty thousand dollars in there just for the-
Okay, and how many computers is that going to increase?
Twenty-seven.
Okay. Okay, I just-
And also, um, in that, I just made a note of that before I came up. Um, the description, uh, for the equipment rental and lease, and we are also looking at, um, renting, are leasing a laminator for the, um, office, and that description is not in there. That's included in the hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, and also, we are looking at renting Charles, what was our other?
A plotter?
A plotter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the description needs to be updated, but it definitely was included in our previous discussions.
So why are we leasing a laminator?
Because I believe that to purchase one would have been twenty-two, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Very similar. The, the idea at this point in time is to change this into a operating expenditure instead of a capital expenditure. Um, and effectively put the risk of any problems on the cost in leasing it to us.
Okay.
Sort of similar to our copiers.
Yes.
Did we not buy a new plotter that's, like, within the last few years?
No, um, what we actually, all we did is we replaced the rollers, the ink rollers, and bought, um, Haley might be able to, um, address that a little bit more, but it turns out that our plotter that we've been using, we've still been having issues with it, so we tried to upgrade a lot of the rollers and, and the ink rollers in there, but it's, it's just not, it's not working for the department. I'm not sure Haley wants to.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor is correct, the plotter was purchased, I believe it was twenty-eighteen. Um, the new one, so the issues that we've been having within the last few months has been with the print heads and quite a bit of, uh, ink leakage. Um, and we can't calibrate without it leaking at the moment, so we did have somebody come up from Edmanson last year, and we spent a few thousand on him trying to fix the issue, and I believe it's coming back again. Um, so we don't want to calibrate, because all the ink drops out of the printer all over the floor. So that's the issue that we're currently facing right now. And we also can't update, um, the software. Every time they send it to us, it's, um, incompatible or it doesn't work, so that's another problem we've been having as well.
So are we leasing this time, or are we purchasing, because that one was-
Oh, we're looking at leasing, so we're looking at leasing a plotter and a laminator, and the laminator would be, I believe, a thirty-two inch, a thirty-two inch laminator, so we can laminate a lot of the bigger projects that we have. And similar to our leases, so far, we've had one quote, but it would go out for, um, R F Q. Um, we have a quote from High Tech so far, just to kind of see what our budget was for leasing. Um, and, yeah, we don't want to run into the problem like Haley's having, where we own the, we own the machine and, and we're still coming into problems with, um, producing any of the products that we need, the mapping and-
I thought those typically came with like a five-year service agreement where it's all covered, like, we paid thirty-five or forty thousand dollars for that plotter.
Yeah, we, we have had considerable problems with both that and-
So there's no warranty? No?
Ms. Kevin, do you mind updating Council on your work on that issue?
Yeah, so the warranty was only for a year, I believe, or perhaps two on certain parts, so obviously that's gone. Uh, and we didn't purchase an additional warranty package, um, so nothing would be included. And again, Deputy Mayor- And we didn't purchase an additional warranty package. So nothing would be included. And again, Deputy Mayor is correct. I believe it was $40,000 we paid for that piece of equipment.
Maybe we can trade it with the endo.
We're not leasing from the same company we bought from, are we?
No, my understanding is that that Mr. Parsons wants to put it out to RFQ to look at options at best, see what planning and development and also community service needs it for, because they they would be using it majority of the time in the office.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Question?
Yeah, you can ask.
The leasing of laminator, you said $20,000 for a laminator? To purchase it? Was that?
Yeah, it's like a lot. It's like.
Yeah.
I'm not certain. It's a long time ago that that.
No, I'm just, we purchased one in our offices, 36 inch here a few years ago. It was under $6,000. So it's all manual. It's all manual fee, and so that's so surprising.
Well, it'll it'll all go out to tenders similar to the plotter to make sure that we're getting the proper service with it.
So I have a question, page 69. Is our option two enhancement really $100,000?
It's the contract, Madam Mayor, that's signed. No, go ahead.
No, it's it isn't. So it, at the time, we estimated we didn't have the option two in there. It was, I believe, it's come back at 82,000 for the year. I believe it's 82,000. So we've added additional funds. We left the additional funds in there just due to any of the extra enforcement that we need at special events and any of the overtime that we could have in there without going over budget with the actual contract and agreement.
And we're up to 142,000 paying this year?
That includes our option to end our enhanced policing that we had in there.
But that's what we're paying under the new policing funding?
Police funding.
Yeah.
And. Oh, the my other question was, do we pay for the lock boxes that go on buildings for our fire department?
So, Madam Mayor, that that program was a carryover from last year because we couldn't get product from the company. So we have a lot of municipal buildings that were required in that, as well as the ones that exist, the existing buildings, like private buildings that have it, we'll have to go back and charge them back for a replacement. So that's the plan. So the any private people, private buildings that require a lock box, we will, once we get the lock boxes in for the initial change of, we'll send them a letter saying we have a new lock box program. We'll provide it to you. Here's the cost. And then for the municipal buildings, we have several municipal lock boxes that we will have to cover up our own, obviously, up our own budget.
Okay.
And then from there on, anybody who needs a new lock box, they'll just be directed to this company's website. They just fill out an application form. It shows up to us, and we just solve the lock box for them.
Okay. I thought we were paying for businesses.
No.
Okay, it's all right. All right, those are my questions. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, if the Council has any questions, just if the Council has moved, my my moving to page 103, the non-functional areas. The mill rate has been altered based on the conversation Council had earlier, so that would be a half mill increase to the non-residential properties. And then that that's reflected in line on page 104, line 764.
104 of the package or 104 of the budget?
Sorry, 104 of the package, 41 of the.
I see it didn't.
Is there a mistake on page 103? Is there a big blank?
No. Well, there it was supposed to shift down on the PDF. It didn't. I wanted the non-functional to be all on one page, so it was just easier reading.
Okay.
Yeah. So yes, there is a mistake.
All right, Council.
What was the CEO just pointing out on which on page 10?
104, 764 with the half mill increase.
Yeah, that shows your your new reserve transfer.
What's a mill worth? Not total, but a. I ask that question every year. I never remember.
All of, oh, across all of our.
Oh, Jerry, I've got your sheet here.
What is one mill?
So one mill across all assessments is approximately $531,000.
531,000?
Yeah. So 239.
Are you sure? One mill?
Yeah.
So we're paying nine mills on our houses, and that's.
So you're you're you pay about 1.2% when everything else is added in for your assessment, your assessed value.
Yeah, but I'm I'm asking, what is the dollar value of one mill?
One the one mill increase in the total budget is 531,000.
If the miller.
You you have $5 million. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I get it. All right. So, Council, do you want to make a motion? Anybody to not to approve the. Nobody wants?
I'll make a motion to adopt the upper budget.
Councilor Lambert? All in favor? Carrie.
She's not afraid.
All right, on to the fees by law.
Madam Mayor, that was presented by Director Phillips. Director Strong does have one small amendment.
Add on?
Add on.
So as part of the committee, the whole meeting, Council asked me to give you a variety of rates. So what I've done is created a spreadsheet. It gives you three examples of water usage, 10, 20, 30 for residential on the left side, and what, three commercials. So the commercials are 50, 150, and 1,000 cubes per month. So and in the highlight will be the total increase. When we look at the rates, we balance the the water and the sewer, and whatever reserve is within your budget right now, this rate matches to achieve those budget values within the reserve. So have a look at it, and if you only can fix it up, you can ask some questions.
Did you want to sit here, please?
You. No, I want to sit next to. Yeah, I can sit there. So if you look at the residential side first, you'll notice at the bottom that that's the total increase per per customer per month. And you'll notice that a variety of usages, whether it's 10, 20, or 30 cubes a month, it's pretty well the same across the board. And one of the reasons we looked at that is one of the concern that citizens had about the wastewater side is when you're watering your lawn, we were charging them for wastewater treatment, and there was a concern that if they're watering their lawn, why are they paying a wastewater surcharge? So we flat rated the surcharge on the the charges on the wastewater to get away from that issue. The majority of the wastewater is in the collection side for the residential. Every property has pretty well the same piping and the same system that it has to feed, so flat rates work for that. Our treatment component within the lagoon system right now is pretty minimal. The overall cost for us in operating the wastewater system is all in the operations side, our restations, our piping, our distributions, our collection system. So when you look at the commercial side, you'll notice under the monthly change, just under the wastewater itself, it's a very small amount. We attempted, because we're having pretty good revenue already in wastewater and having a substantial sufficient reserves, we added that. We didn't want to change the wastewater rates at this time. Where the significant increase is is within the water rates itself, and that was set as as a discussion at Committee Level needed to achieve that reserve level. So this will meet between the two, it will meet both our operating and our reserve contribution requirements for 2022, based on 2020 and 2021 consumption. On the commercial side, the very large amounts, like the 1,000 cubes from out, those are tend to be heavy, heavy industrial, heavy commercial, as well as our water franchising partners. And again, those are monthly increases based on very large amounts of water.
So key, for the commercial water, you changed the base to 75?
Yes, so the rates set will be the first column in each one. So under residential water, the first column, it says current and then new. So the new will be the rate, $25 flat rate. And that's the same across the board. The first column under new is the actual rate. The columns following are showing you what the average cost is based on a usage of, say, 50, 150, or 1,000 cubes a month. 1,000 cubes a month is a lot of water. We have a few of those accounts.
Is it mine?
Those tend to be large commercial and government buildings, anything 150 above. Heavy consumers of water, based on their industry.
So where does this go? Under which page?
So this is different than the one that we originally had.
So on Schedule G?
But it's just the base.
Is it?
So Schedule G is on page 128 of the package, is what he's referring to for water and sewer standard rates. And so what we would propose is to do first reading, and then we'll add in the amendments to the fees by law and bring it back for second and third reading.
Yes, there is a mistake. Under commercial water rate, the flat rate.
So you just want first reading, no?
Yeah, so originally, we we did put in the utility rates, but these are these are a little different than what we have in the fees by law that we're presenting, so.
Okay, does somebody want to move first reading? Counselor Lambert? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, I guess I don't have any chance to ask a question right now. Okay, property tax by law.
And Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will also address the property tax by law.
Madam Mayor and Council, the property tax by law was based on the general municipal taxation revenue of five point or $5,863,598 as per the non-functional revenues that were outlined in the 2022 operating budget. Proposed in the property tax by law is a half mill increase to the non-residential tax rate. So the administration's asking the Council to give first, second, and third reading to the 2022 property tax by law 102822 as presented. I've also attached our current assessment outlined in there, as well as the non-functional revenues are highlighted of what we do need to generate as general municipal taxation revenue. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
There was no, this is an annual thing. There's no changes?
The only change.
Point five mills to the.
Yeah, is the rate for non-residential. So so what we what we do is we take our assessment that our approved assessment and the revenue that we need to generate for from our operating budgets. So once the operating budget's approved, then we present the property tax rate by law, so then we can send out our tax notices in May. It's a it's an annual annual by law that needs to be passed by Council.
Every year, we have to do it.
It's still new.
Yes.
Just for Council, to clarify the question that we had earlier, a one mill increase for the residential would be 243,84364, and the one mill for the non-residential is 287, 287,09255. So the half mill increase on the non-residential is worth about $143,500.
Does that turn off page 139?
Does Council have any questions? So so it suggested that we raise taxes on the industrial a half a mill, whereas residential will remain the same as last year.
And that, and that, if I may, Madam Mayor, that conversation came from our previous presentation of where Town of High Level sits when it comes to our mill rate in comparison to a lot of municipalities that are similar to our industry and is similar to our population. So currently, out of seven different municipalities, we are, we were at the lowest mill rate. So we were at 11.5 with Town of Peace River at 18.0 as their non-residential rate. So we were even lower than the average non-residential mill rate in our area with comparison municipalities. Where with the residential rate, we are more on the higher end of the average. So Council's decision at that time was to leave residential and look at maybe getting non-residential up a little bit more.
Is there any questions? Yes.
So neither mill rate has changed in a number of years, right?
The last time we looked, the only mill rate change was in 2018. We increased residential a little bit, and that was it. So we haven't really looked at any major changes when it comes to any of the mill rates for Town of High Level.
It's not to say your tax bill won't go up.
No.
Because lodge has gone up, and so has education, or did education tax remain the same?
No, it actually went up from 1.17 to 1.275 this year.
And if you were one of those that had a higher assessment, one of those 80%?
Assessment will drive that more than any mill rate changes, I understand.
Any of, yes.
Move first reading.
Deputy Mayor moves first reading. All in favor? Carried. Could I have someone move second reading?
Move second reading.
Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carried. Can I have a move to unanimous consent, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And third and final reading?
I can make third and final reading, Madam.
Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carried. Get off, parade. Get off. All right, so we're going to Correspondents for Action, and there's an invitation from Beaver First Nation for me to attend their their national or their Indian Residential School commemoration, which was supposed to happen in October, but they never got the the monument until it was too cold outside. So I'm asking for Council to approve for me to go there on May 17. Counselor Anderson, all in favor? And I'm imagining everybody else that wants to go.
We'll we'll pull Council, and I know there's a number of members of the administration would like to.
Okay. Correspondents for Information. I was going to ask, where's this plaque from Logan Lake?
I can show Council. Like, we actually just brought out the fire book because I showed the team this morning. They hadn't seen it yet, so.
I showed the team this morning, they hadn't seen it yet, so.
So is it going to hang in our building?
It's just actually a really small plaque on a stand, so it's really hard to label this big, so.
It's, it's very nice.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Yeah, we can bring it to Council for the next meeting and show them.
Okay, thank you. Can, does somebody want to pull any items out of there, or can we move to accept it all for information?
Make the motion.
Councilor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. So the, move notice of motions, is there any questions from the audience? Lot, stop, I heard. Okay, so we now go into closed in camera, so thank you for attending our meeting.
Thank you, perfect, nice to see you back.
Thank you.
Are we off?
Do we make the motion to go into closed session?
Can we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make it since I have to.
Okay, Councilor Dwyer, all in favor? Carrie.